Education meeting. Can I have a roll call?
Mr. Bowman?
Here.
Mrs. Doyle?
Here.
Mrs. Croner?
Here.
Mr. Lightfoot?
Present.
Ms. Morgan?
Here.
Mrs. Moyer?
Here.
Mrs. Swanson?
Here.
Please rise for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item four point one is recognition, so at this time I'd ask that the board please join me out front so that we may meet, greet, and recognize our students for some of their outstanding accomplishments this past fall.
The Board of Education is proud to acknowledge the award-winning efforts of our students who have received state recognition for their school-related activities this past season. Tonight, the district would like to congratulate two individuals for having achieved a perfect thirty-six composite ACT score. The ACT is a national college entrance exam that consists of questions on the subjects of English, mathematics, reading, and science. Princeton Review cites that the current national average ACT score is twenty-one, and less than two tenths of one percent of ACT test takers earn a perfect score. Tonight, from Oswego East High School, having earned the school's first perfect score is Christine Corpus. And from Oswego High School, Eric Drawley. We'll invite the principals up for a photo with the Board of Education, Dr. Sparland, and the students. Congratulations. We will have one more group that wasn't able to join us this evening. The Oswego Girls Co-op Swim and Dive Team placed third at the IHSA State Meet, but they will be with us in January. Now, we will move on to our December Pride Employee Recognition Program winners. Tonight, the Board of Education acknowledges our Pride Recognition Program winners for December. Pride stands for Proudly Recognizing Individuals Demonstrating Excellence, and recognizes the efforts of teachers and staff who are engaged in exceptional work across the district. This year, our schools nominate and select their own teachers and employees during a designated month. This allows the Pride Program to honor more individuals from every school and every department across the district. We thank all of our generous district partners for helping make this program a success. We'll ask you to hold your applause until the end of each category. Awardees, as your name is called, please stand and remain standing until all in your category have been announced, and then we'll invite you forward to be congratulated by the Board and Dr. Sparland. We'll ask our Allied First Bank representative to come forward. The first awardees are the Allied Bank Teachers of the Month. What teachers do day in and day out is vital to the success of our students. They plant the seeds of learning and help our students grow. The following teachers have been named as our Teachers of the Month for the December. From Long Beach Elementary School, Mike Cavello, third, fourth grade teacher, and Tracy Zaled, a kindergarten gifted ed teacher. And from the Transition Center, Adrian Cruz, a case manager teacher. Congratulations, teachers. We'll invite any representatives from those two buildings forward for the photo. Congratulations, teachers. Our next awardees this evening are our Employees of the Month. This award is given in appreciation of individual employees' ability to not only go above and beyond, but also for their ability to reflect the true meaning of service. Our Huntington Learning Center Employees of the Month for the month of December are from Long Beach Elementary School, Joan Denton, Lunchroom and Resa Supervisor; from the Transition Center, Gerald Houston, Teacher Assistant, Job Coach; and from the Operations Department, Guadalupe Rodriguez, Day Custodian. Congratulations, employees. Please come forward to be recognized. We will invite any representatives from these departments and buildings forward to join the employees for the photo. Congratulations, employees. Item number five, public comment. On behalf of the Board of Education, I would like to thank the public for attending tonight's meeting. We value the feedback we receive from our residents and encourage everyone to take an active interest in their public school system. Residents interested in speaking to the Board this evening are asked to have completed a comment card and presented it to the Secretary to the Board. When the Secretary calls your name, I ask that you come to the microphone, state your name for the public record, and provide your feedback. Please note that comments are limited to five minutes per person and that no discussion of personnel matters or responses to questions are permitted. The Board does not participate in discussion during public comment. Follow-up to your questions or concerns will be addressed by administration through the contact information provided on the comment card. Colin Paul?
Hello, my name is Colin Paul from OEHS, and I'd like to promote a software that would help students with their grades in English and with writing skills overall. The software is called Grammarly, and it can be downloaded to any computer through the Google Chrome Store. Grammarly will help with students' writing and improve their grades. It can detect small proper, small improper punctuation to words that have been overused too much. The cost of Grammarly Premium Monthly Subscription is thirty dollars a month, and the annual subscription is eleven dollars sixty-six month, uh, per month, or billed as one hundred and thirty-nine ninety-five. The pros to this, it will give teachers a faster turnaround with papers, so teachers can cram more into each semester. It will improve students' grades overall, and it may not be perfect, but it has a ninety percent effectiveness detecting mistakes over Google. It has a built-in plagiarism checker for students and teachers to use alike. The cons, it won't detect every problem, it's not perfect, and also the cost. That's it.
Thank you. Item six point one, Board Member Comments. Anybody, anything to share?
I just want to say that Ruth Croner and I attended a nice event in the last week where we went to see, December second, where we went to see the Robotics Club in the fourth and fifth grade with Donna Bornamann as their coach at the Wheatlands. And I thought it was a great example of kids doing a good job of doing a public presentation. They did stuff on, um, energy use in the school district, and also the skills needed to be professional in any field. So that was a good view into what these after-school clubs can do for the kids. I think she works very hard as a coach. I know all the coaches for robotics work really hard with the kids. But it was a, it was a good chance to see what the kids can do at a very young age, and, um, from her stories, you could see that the kids are learning to get along better and cooperate more on the projects, whereas they start out a little contentious, and as they get to know each other, they do better. So I thought that was a good thing to pass along, and I thought it was a great thing to attend. I also heard that Crystals and the OEHS band concerts were great, but I didn't make it to either this year.
Anyone else?
I was able to attend the III Joint Annual Conference in Chicago, and I really enjoyed that very much. I thought the general session speakers that I went to were excellent and attended several different breakout sessions, were very helpful, some more helpful than others, but I look forward to hopefully being able to attend that again in the future. It was great, um, first experience, man, there was a lot of people, a lot of people. And then we had our Finance and Facilities meeting, which I will let Brent do the update on that later. And we'll second, obviously, what Tony said, we went to that first Lego League. I believe their competition is this coming Saturday, so, and it really is a terrific program. And I think that teacher coaches three other teams? Like, there's, I know she has a junior high and elementary team, so, and uses parent volunteer coaches too, so. And then I was able to go to the Crystals concert at OHS, and it was amazing, as always. I would highly encourage anybody next year, if you have opportunity, it sells out really fast, but it is a terrific show, lots of talented kids in this district. And this Saturday, there's Jazz Festival, SD three oh eight Jazz Festival at Murphy, so I'm going to that too.
Anyone else?
Sure, I think, um, see, our last board meeting was the eleventh of November, correct? So we haven't, we haven't been here since all this fun stuff happened. Uh, one other little quick note, if anyone didn't pick up on that, um, the Girls Co-op Swim and Dive Team brought home third place in the state this year. Very exciting for, um, that team. They worked hard, they've been working hard for a long time. Fun to see that success turn into hardware in this case. And, uh, so I think this is the third year in a row the team has placed either third or second at states. So congratulations to the, to the girls.
Okay, so I also was able to attend Crystals. It was a good show. Oswego, even though we don't have a student there, just because it's a great show, and I always like seeing how many people go to this show that don't even have students in the school or in the district. It's just a community event that has kind of become a tradition. It was the twenty-fifth year, and they did an excellent job. Um, I also was able to attend III, and I did act as our delegate for the IASB session where they, uh, appointed a new president and a new treasurer, um, or, I guess we elected. And I wanted to note that about half of the school districts in the state were able to attend, which left about four hundred and twenty-some that did not attend. But we went through the information that you'd all seen, um, pretty much the same results as we've seen in years past, nothing too different there, so they'll pass those recommendations on to ISB for consideration. And I also was able to attend a legislative update from some of our local legislators, not anyone from our districts here, um, but some other local legislator, or state legislators. Um, and it sounds like they've been doing a lot of work, and that's kind of echoing what I've been hearing from Kristi and Dr. Sparland, that, uh, we have a lot of different options coming forward for different types of property tax relief, which, um, I'm pretty excited to see. And that was pretty much it. And I want to say thank you to everybody. We're ending the first semester in a couple weeks before we meet again, so thank you to everybody in the district that's been working really hard the last few weeks to finish upgrades and doing all the work with the kids. And enjoy your little break before we come back in for semester two. Six point two, Board Committee Reports. Whoa, there were a lot of them. Everybody had a meeting, started with Finance and Facilities.
All right, uh, thank you. So, uh, Ruth and I, uh, met with the Finance and Facilities Committee. That was on Monday, the twenty-fifth. Three subjects, no particular order here. Um, we got, uh, some information and an update, and a lot of good input on space needs regarding the Transition Center. And, um, it was nice, and I think Ruth will agree, that we had, um, parents, we had some students, we had staff members of the center came to the committee meeting, and they spoke at the end to give us some, uh, insights on their, um, their thoughts around it. And, um, I think, based on what we heard, we had all sorts, the committee had all sorts of questions. I'm sure the Board does too, um, and I understand that, um, I think what came out of our meeting was, was really the need for a long-term, sustainable plan. I don't think we're there yet. I think we have some Band-Aid solutions, and so that's why we're kind of pushing this back, uh, to Dr. Sparland, for his staff to, uh, frame together some bigger picture ideas and thoughts before we jump into some short-term solutions that, um, probably won't solve anything other than for a year or two. So we're looking forward to doing that in the future. Probably won't, we won't be addressing it again in January, but we'll be talking about it soon. Um, next, we talked about the Property Tax Relief Grant. We're going to be talking about that again tonight, so I won't steal the thunder on that one. I will, at the, at the time, I'll tell you what the committee had some concerns about. Um, and we also talked about the Kendall County Land Cache. If you're, Board Members that are not up to date here, there was a proposal in front of the county to make some changes to the land cache. Um, I know we've inserted ourselves now and, uh, expressed concerns with the lowering of that rate. Um, other governing bodies, uh, school districts that are affected and within the county have also, um, weighed in on that, so we talked about that a little bit. Uh, Ruth, is there anything else you want to?
I don't think so, yeah. It was really nice to see so many members of the public attend that committee meeting.
Yeah, it's disappointing because those meetings are so fun.
They're very, every time.
I don't know why we don't have a packed house every meeting.
I don't either. Maybe we'll start a new trend.
In your, in your report on the land cache from the county, did they give any information on one that's next going to be discussed at the county level?
Uh, I'm going to defer to Kristi on this. I think there's a couple of things going on.
Right. Excuse me, so I did speak to Ms. Vickers, who's in the audience, and, um, it was to be on the, um, agenda for December third, but they did not think it would be, they would have an attorney's opinion by that time. So Ms. Vickers did promise to let me know when they are going to bring it back to the committee, to the Board. The seventeenth, I'm writing that down.
Teaching and Learning, quick summary?
Sure. Um, we had our meeting, and, uh, our last meeting was November nineteenth. Um, we spent, um, a good portion of the meeting, um, looking at the student learning data. Um, so everybody was able to have a Chromebook and, um, look at the Illinois Report Card, and Faith kind of walked us through, um, through the, through the report card a little bit. Um, we looked at some of the, some, a number of the different data points, but we focused on some of the scatter plots and did kind of a notice and wonder small group activity. Um, so I think, um, that was helpful and interesting. There's so much data. Um, you know, there's so much data on there that it was a very, it was just a, um, just a, you know, brief kind of look, and I am hoping that people went, um, went back and, and dug in a little deeper after the meeting. Um, but we also talked about graduation requirements and the course catalog, talked about, um, you know, the process that went in, the process and a lot of the, the hard work that has gone into the catalog, um, cleaned up, cleaning it up, and, um, were able to talk a little bit about, um, the process for parents and students in selecting their, um, as they look at selecting their new, uh, their courses for the upcoming year. And then the other thing on the agenda was the College and Career Ready, um, which looked at the, um, um, reviewed the ESSA indicators for, um, the state report card, and that'll be, those are, is that, is that new then, or for the twen, for twenty twenty-one? Yes. Yeah, so looked at, um, those kind of new indicators, and, um, and we kind of just talked through, um, some of those things and talked about, um, uh, what we're doing to prepare and be ready for that. And I think a lot of, we have a lot of those things already, um, in place, so. Our next meeting will be January seventh.
Tony?
I just wanted to say that I'm very thankful for the people who did all that work with the course catalog. That was a tremendous effort. And also, um, as far as the data goes, the Teaching and Learning Committee is full of very devoted, interested, enthusiastic parents and community members, so I think the data will get a much deeper look from them. But thank you to everybody who worked on the course catalog. Please pass that along.
Policy and Legislative.
I'm going to fill in on this one. I wasn't able to make that last meeting, but I can present a little bit better than the co-chair at the moment. Uh, the meeting started with Dr. Sparland giving a legislative update. Uh, the first several policies that were gone over were basically footnote, uh, changes, little minor, um, necessary. And following, uh, that, some legal changes, a few word changes, dropping some ing's here and there. Um, I think renaming under the, um, the drug use policy of five point five zero, a nice description on e-cigarettes and how that, uh, now entails a nice longer verbiage. Uh, so nothing too, too drastic though, however.
Now it's coming back. So, so for five point five, we're, we're going to accept it, but they're going to bring it back after January first because of all the new laws that are coming in.
Thank you. Superintendent's Report.
All right, good evening, Board. I have one item I wanted to highlight for this evening. On Thursday, November twenty-seventh, first, I attended the Illinois State Board of Education State Budget Hearing in Chicago, where I provided testimony in regards to the evidence-based funding formula. Uh, the focus of my testimony on the, regarding the evidence-based funding formula was, uh, our current and our future funding. I shared that our district is currently at, uh, six three, sixty-three percent of our adequacy target, and that we're considered a tier-one school in regards to the model. I also shared that, uh, we all know that the evidence-based funding formula has been a step in the right direction, and my message to the State Board that morning was really a plea to continue to not only advocate what's been allocated to EBF over the past few years, but to advocate for the amount that we need to ensure that school districts like ours, who are in the bottom tier of the model, are able to reach the adequacy targets by the year twenty twenty-seven, uh, date that's stated in Public Act one zero zero dash four six five, the Funding Formula for Illinois Public Schools. So that is my one update for this evening.
When you testify like that, are there only so many superintendents allowed per meeting, or do multiple show up, or how many other superintendents are there kind of advocating?
Yeah, no, there's, there's, there's no, there's no limit. Um, obviously, you know, there's eight hundred and fifty-two school districts in the state. I think there were four different budget hearings across the state, so I went to the one in Chicago. Um, there were a lot of people there to testify, not necessarily maybe superintendents, but people advocating for different funds for their school system. I, I think, I, I think I told Lori that I sat for four and a half hours waiting to, to give, to give that testimony, and, uh, but it's good because it's on record, and it's very important, as I've, as I spoke about in the past, and I'll continue to speak about in the future, the importance of continually advocating for that evidence-based funding formula so that we can get up to that ninety percent adequacy target.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Did they have any thoughts that you heard that day on any particular changes to the rate at which they're going to try to fund that?
You know what, there weren't, there weren't any that day. There were so many people that day. There was, it was more, it was more like a public comment. There wasn't any really real back and forth between the State Board and the people giving testimony that day.
And what happens next in that process?
Um, you know what, the Illinois State Board of Education advocates very much for the, uh, the number of dollars that should be allocated to the, uh, evidence-based funding formula, so they meets that twenty twenty-seven. Um, it's just, we're limited by the number of dollars that the state has to actually allocate to it. So, um, they do their job, and, uh, everyone's trying their best to make ends meet.
Thank you. And thank you for spending four and a half hours waiting in line. Very necessary thing. All right, um, does anyone have any questions on the Consent Agenda? I have one, and just putting it out there. Um, there are some policies in the Consent Agenda that have no strikeouts or changes in color. Is that because they did not need any rev, you'd reviewed them and they didn't need any changes?
Those were from the time before, weren't they?
From the, from the meeting before, not this past meeting, from the meeting before that. There were, there were a few on here that just didn't have anything different about them, and that's because they didn't need anything different? They were just reviewing them?
Yes, or there was a change.
Footnotes.
In the footnotes?
Footnotes.
There were footnotes. There were also a change that we changed the wording that wasn't related to press, so then there's no strikeout because we went back to what we had originally said.
Okay.
I did have a quick question about one of the policies. Would now be the time to ask that question?
Yes.
I had a question about policy six point three one zero, credit for alternative, and...
Courses?
Courses, yes. So that mentions like the PE credit for, um, sports as well as marching band. Has there been any consideration for show choir receiving that as well? Because I think those...
Yes, that, uh, is being discussed at the high school level. I believe, uh, Heather Kincaid had a meeting yesterday. No, that would have been something.
Faith, could you lean into the microphone so the folks at home can hear?
Yes, it is being discussed. There have been a couple of meetings that are already have been in place to talk about that, and there is another meeting either this week or, yeah, it has to be tomorrow. Um, that they're meeting to discuss that, and then that plan will be brought back.
Yeah, I just want to voice also that I'm very interested in hearing how that develops, and I'm hoping that the meetings will turn into some kind of an action plan because of the heavy-duty schedule for rehearsals and the amount of...
Remember they run the halls while singing, like...
Yeah, yeah. I don't know if everybody who's listening understands how much that involves, but that involves a lot of physical activity and a lot of hours, and some would say a lot more hours than some teams have to put in. And some would say a lot more hours than some teams have to put in.
Oh, definitely. I think so too.
All right. If there's no other questions, can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I make a motion to approve all items under consent, including 7.1 minutes from the November 11th, 2019 Board of Education Meeting, open and closed session, 7.2 to acknowledge the FOIA requests, and 7.3 to approve the following board policy references and legal updates. Section 2, School Board, 2:250, Section 3, General School Administration, 3:50, Section 4, Operational Services, 4:40, 4:110, 4:140, 4:150, 4170, 4175. And Section 5, General Personnel, 5100, 5125, 5150, 5220, 5260. Section 6, Instruction, 615, 620, 6180, 6210, 6270, 6310, 6320. And finally, Section 7, Students, 7190, 7200, and 7290.
Second.
Mrs. Croner?
Aye.
Mr. Lightfoot?
Aye.
Mrs. Moyer?
Aye.
Mr. Baumann?
Aye.
Mrs. Swanson?
Aye.
Mrs. Doyle?
Aye.
Ms. Morgan?
Aye.
Motion passes 7.08.1.
Item 8.1 is financial statements. Does the board have any questions to the information provided? All right. Item 8.2, our board policies for first read. Does the board have any questions regarding the policies that are being presented this evening as information?
Of course I do. Maybe, maybe more of a statement, 2:230, participation at school board meetings and petitions to the board.
Is it the wording?
No.
We've been fighting over this word.
If there's something you want to highlight, you can. I don't have an issue with changing from 30 minutes to 20 minutes. I think that's, that's good. Sorry, Ms. Swanson, to your comment there. I'm a little, I'm not, I'm not, the only word I can think of is perplexed, and I don't know if I'm really perplexed about it. There's some ambiguity which exists in all policies. Sometimes for good reason. But, you know, we, we've taken the, we've taken the approach of comments shall be limited to five minutes, and that's kind of been the policy of, of this board for, for quite some time. I've, I've argued for it to be shorter so that we can hear more voices. The opposite side of that is there's always been language in the policy that has afforded the president the ability to limit, change, lengthen, or shorten. And I'm thinking about this two ways. It's like, it's almost like, well, why do we have a five-minute rule if we then say that the board president can add or shorten at will? And I'm not calling for specificity over when and why and where those things would happen. I'm wondering if we don't take the opportunity to make, and I know Matt, you'll disagree with me, but what if we made the, the comments slightly shorter with the opportunity to afford people an additional 30 seconds or an additional minute if they're in the middle of a thought, provided that we're maintaining that, that 20-minute total length. So for example, tonight, young Mr., he's not even here. Young, young Mr. Paul was here and he only used two of his minutes. Because we only had one. That's a different issue. I was gonna say, we never know how many people are actually speaking. Maybe the president does. That's a situation where maybe you could tell the person ahead of time, hey, if you need more, you can go over because we've allotted 20 minutes for this. I, I'm sorry. I think, I think I'm rambling. I'm just saying, I would like something a little bit more concrete. Maybe we go to four minutes. And then maybe we do a little bit more of a definition about when in the meeting the board president will announce that additional time will be afforded or less time will be afforded based on his or her knowledge of how many people have signed up, signed up to speak. Does that make any sense? If not, I withdraw everything.
The part I remembered from the beginning, no, I think that to the very last point was that we announced that currently when we read through the instructions for public comment. And that's when we'll say if we've needed to shorten it or whatever because of the number or because occasionally, the only other time I think we ever adjusted is to limit to three comments per topic. And that's usually when there's a, a large thing. For me personally, I didn't ever particularly realize we had a 20-minute minimum total length for any one subject. Which to me is like, if you limit that to three comments per topic and it's a five-minute limit, how can you ever reach 20 minutes on any one subject?
To be fair, these are the same conversations we had at committee.
I bet they are. So tell us what you guys, yeah. Tell us what you came up with.
This is what we came up with. This is Val Patterson's brainchild.
I think it's really fine. I think it's really fine the way it is. I don't think that this is a huge issue.
Yeah, I, I don't either, except the only comment would be that the 20-minute minimum total length for any one subject is something that I'm a little concerned about.
We were trying to set minimums, right? We were, Val's way better at explaining.
No, she doesn't. I'm not sure.
We really, we spent a lot of time on this.
Going forward, she can get that information over to us about that. Or do you want to step up? We're not gonna put you on the spot.
Hi, Val.
Where we are.
While she's preparing, I would just like to add that I like how we changed the, the, public can submit a comment card prior to the end of the public comment section. Because I know prior to sitting on the board, there were times when I would be sitting, I was like, oh, I should have filled out that comment card because I had something and I, you have to submit it prior. So I like, but that might also extend the time too.
But I agree with you, Ruth, that that is a, that is a change in the policy that's actually gonna make a difference in what, the way that I've seen board meetings go before I was on the board and now. That people come in late, sometimes they didn't realize they had to turn in a card until they see people going up or until they see somebody giving a card. And that is a way to expand public participation. As far as these time limits and stuff, I hope we have a time limit on how long we're gonna discuss this because I don't think.
We do. It's 10 minutes. So your, your current policy doesn't have that 20 minutes or even 30 minute on any one subject. Is there a legal requirement for it? No. This whole change to this policy was in response to a court case earlier this year that came out against a school district that they were limiting public comment. You are not limiting public comment here. So you don't necessarily have to make that change. You know, five to four would be fine. What this allows for is, under certain circumstances, you can shorten the time. It doesn't allow you to expand the time. It, it allows you to expand the overall time, but not any individual, at least not as currently written.
I just, I'm, I'm, I'm confused just about the, the, the 20-minute, 20-minute minimum. Because, if, yeah, because that's gonna be, that would be really hard, I think, to track because not everybody goes in a row, in the, like, if you're talking about per subject, you could have 10 people come up and I mean, so it does seem like it would be.
A minute and a half of their five.
A minute and a half, yeah. So it does seem like a certain number, like we have been doing it, you know, we'll take three or five on any one subject, whatever number we decide on here in terms of, you know, number of minutes. Seems like it might be more, I don't know, easy to manage, but.
Matt, and I can take it back to committee again.
Yeah, let's, let's talk about that minimum if that's all right.
So we've, we've reduced the overall maximum of 30, 30 minutes. Is that because of the, of the, the court case?
I think all of these changes were based on that court case. None of which had been an issue in the district. Correct.
No.
Right. There's nothing in the law that says you have to do these because, again, your overall minimum of 30 minutes, which again, I don't think you, well, minimum, it's not a maximum, so you're fine.
That language, that language just doesn't make sense.
No.
Okay, we're gonna sit here for 20 minutes and hope that somebody else walks in.
Yeah, I just really feel like.
You could take that out. You could stick with your overall minimum of 30 minutes and not, and, and delete that 20-minute language.
I mean.
The last, the last sentence is there that when public participation takes less time than the minimum, it shall end. This, the, the whole paragraph seems kind of irrelevant.
So it's just trying to make sure that if somebody comes in and reads, you know, that, that we have allocated that amount of time, you can't look out in the audience and say, oh, there's a lot of people here. Tonight, we're gonna give three-minute max to public comment.
Well, you can.
Per person.
You, you can.
You can't say that you're, for overall public comment, there's 100 people in the room that we're gonna do three minutes and that's it. Pick one person to talk.
Oh, but each person down from five to three.
You can't take down the time.
But I think you can say an hour, an hour and a half. I don't know that you necessarily have to go on for hours. Yeah, I think that typically this has been handled more informally on a case-by-case as needed. And I, my concern is that changing and adding to policies because it's an idea is, is a concern just because it's, the more things you put into a policy, the more things someone needs to keep track of doing.
We were trying to make it less.
Yeah. You, you also can leave in that language that struck under three with respect to the board president. May, for instance, may deny a person the opportunity to speak for more than five minutes, may deny the opportunity to speak who previously addressed the board on the same subject. Again, assuming it's within, if you have a lot of people and you're trying to.
I, I think whether or not the president chooses to enforce that, I think it should be in there. Because if we had the same person coming to meeting after meeting after meeting and they just want to repeat the same thing over and over and over about year-round school, that's not valuable use of, of the board's time, right? Obviously, we want to hear the person, but we don't need to hear from them every single week.
But their policy, this policy doesn't address who gets to speak every week, does it?
I think we're talking about practical applications and the need to have a policy and what practical situations they would apply to.
You guys could all email Matt and I your suggestions and we'll take it back to committee.
Yeah, let's just take it back to the committee because I think it's taking a lot of our valuable board time right now.
Is that our 10 minutes? Ursula's saying this is 10 minutes. You made it, Tony. Good work.
Good job.
I'm not proud of that. Okay.
And just for the record, so I can just say that, or we can say Brent is correct, I would disagree.
Well, you got that. There you go.
Any other questions regarding the policies that are being presented for information this evening? Okay, hearing done. 8.3.
I was catching my words and thing. Can we talk about the social-emotional development 6.65? Can you, maybe Faith, can, you can explain the motivation behind adding the, and changing around the one there?
Sure. So almost all of the changes or additions that you see are recommendations from press, which school attorneys across Illinois have put out the updates. So they are recommending some of the changes that are here, which have become more detailed from the Illinois learning standards to include, you know, the goals that are there. If you look at, it gets a little bit more definitive about what the social-emotional learning standards are. And this is what multiple districts and across Illinois are adopting as their social-emotional language.
So to be clear, that's not something coming from here specifically? That's something that's being recommended?
Correct. It's an unfunded mandate.
It's an unfunded mandate. Thank you. That's where I was going.
Can I ask a quick question about 4:20? Fund balances?
Yep.
Why, why are we, why are we making changes to the percentage?
We, we had originally talked about going to 15%, and then we went to 20% because they said the finance and facility committee wanted 20% and it matches the strategic plan.
Oh, the finance and facilities.
I don't recall a definitive number.
Yes, we, at that committee where we put our dots on the sentence strips and put that in, it was a 20%. And that is currently the language that is being shared around as a draft.
Okay. But it's just a draft of the strategic plan. It hasn't been voted on yet. So I think it's a little premature to add a policy with a specific number when this is, this is not particularly a final product in any way, shape, or form at this point.
Right. Again, this is coming from the press language where there was a range and we needed to assign a number. But we can go back and change this.
Sure. And what was the range? Can we just put in the range then?
It said no less than, I think it was originally no less than 25.
It is, yeah. So, and now press has come back with, you can, you know, you can be as low as 15% and still be within those guidelines. So in the.
That, that's very reasonable to me. However, my concern is that basing the decision to change the number from 25 to 20 based on an exercise on strategic planning from one committee, when I think I've been hearing through the process of strategic planning is that it wouldn't be complete. And that was one set of input to that set of questions, that there would be more parties looking at them. I'm, I'm hesitant to do much in the way of changes, just to make changes again.
So would you like it pulled?
I mean, I don't know if, if anybody else wants it pulled. I just, I don't see the point of doing it quite yet when it's not a complete recommendation.
Well, but all these, all these.
Of the, of the finance committee.
Right, but when January 1st comes, a lot of these other ones, like 5-50, a lot of those are gonna change too. Like, a lot of these are gonna change. It's like, it's a. Yeah.
In which case, why not just wait till January? But again, that's just where I'm at with it. You guys had talked about these in your last meeting. Was anybody looking, and I'm sure you were, looking at what the changes in January would be so that we didn't have to do some changes again?
I don't think you're any longer talking about the fund balance correction, right?
Including the fund balance correction. So I'm, I'm hearing that a lot of these are gonna change January 1st and these were.
Not a lot, not a lot of them.
Oh, okay. A few, this one.
The current, the current policy says 25%, correct? And press, press has made a recommendation for a range, correct?
No, they've given a range and you should pick a number.
Yeah.
So the, really the bottom line is whatever the Board of Education for 308 would like this number to be, that's what the number should be.
So what's the problem with it being 20%? Is that not something that we can say, that's pretty reasonable, we're gonna go with that?
Do you think it's reasonable? Or do you?
No. If the finance committee says it's reasonable, it must be reasonable.
Well, but they didn't think that that's what they were, that, my question is that this isn't, they didn't think they were answering that question.
Even in draft form, there has to be a reason for that number.
I would say that for this, we would want to send this specifically, not under the auspices of strategic planning. I think that this, what kind of revenue ratio we would want would be something that we would want them to be talking about unless you feel you've discussed it enough.
Could we throw that to maybe Christie on what that realistic percentage would be?
We brought it back a second time. This is the second time that we've brought it back in our committee. Because originally we were, I believe we were at 15.
Originally, we took the lowest end at 15. And then we thought that that wasn't matching what the finance committee and what we had talked about. And we could back it down, but to go out and to have the policy be that, but have something.
I think we're forgetting that we've had this a couple of times. And I think that there has to be some coordination between the policy committee and the finance committee because that's the fair way to work. And I don't think it's fair to ask policy to keep going back to finding this number. I think that a number has to be given. It should probably give, be given not by Christie, but by the guidance of the finance committee. And then we need to just put it in there and be okay with it.
We like the feedback we get from committees, but at the end of the day, it's the seven of us that have to decide. I look, and, and just me, we at one time in this district had fund balances of 30%, okay? And that number has gone down every year as we've gotten in the financial crunch that we're currently, currently in. I look at this policy as a district goal. So lowering the goal because we can't meet the goal is probably not the right direction to go. So can we hit 30%? Probably not. Hopefully, we can in several years. And so if you're asking me personally, I And so if you're asking me personally, I would rather it be twenty-five percent. I'm willing to go from thirty to twenty-five. I'm not comfortable with twenty.
What do we have now?
Like eight?
Yeah, so we had kind of talked about what we had now and kind of setting a goal for the, for the, like, foreseeable, not maybe for the foreseeable future, but something that was attainable that we could go and that we could put in the strategic plan that as a district, we could come together and say, we need to get our fund balances back so we're not borrowing all the ticks and disbursement warrants and all the other stuff that we're doing.
Right.
So we gave them, I mean, we doubled their, what they have now as a goal. So while I appreciate twenty-five percent, I'm still at twenty.
Yeah. And keeping in mind that that's how it went down, I'm okay with twenty-two because I think that that was thoughtful and it was realistic. So that's where I'm going to stay, twenty.
I, I mean, I'm fine with it being at twenty. I, I'm fine with it being at twenty. I, I, I think that we're clearly having a communication issue about the, how the process hap, this, of this happened, which we can rectify, but I think twenty is a, when you look, seeks to maintain a year-end fund balance of no less than twenty percent, I think that's, we're at eight. I think it's a goal that we can strive for and that we should be striving for, but it's a realistical.
I agree, but I also agree with Brent that like if we just keep lowering the expectation, then that's not, it's similar to like with our students, if I see, I, I know what you're capable of up here. I know that you can get Bs, but you're only getting Cs because you're really, you know, you've got some work to do. If I lower, okay, well, I'll, I'll take the Cs. That's fine. That's good. Then are we going to lower the outcome again?
But you're talking about money.
Can we listen to this conversation for a minute about this policy? We're at eight percent. We're not going to get to twenty, twenty-five, fifteen, eighteen percent without a change in our financial picture. This is a crazy way to spend eight minutes on this policy because it's not happening. I'm sorry, but this, can we either, can we move it back to finance for review or?
But we also, we also have a district's goal of eliminating TAWs.
Can, can we say then let's keep the district, keep its head above financial water? I mean, to argue about fifteen to twenty percent when we're sitting at eight at this point on a policy, a policy which we're not even able to.
But the decisions that we're making as a board reflect what, where we want to be, like these policies are a guideline as to how.
Yeah, but Ruth, these are the deck chairs. These are the deck chairs, not the actual thing. If we want to make this go, what we need to work, spend eight minutes talking about is how we're going to cut some money.
For the next few years, move it to ten percent.
Or not go by a seven-person committee, but we do.
Right.
Because sometimes we have to talk about things. Um, one of the things being that if we're putting in our strategic plan and if we're putting in our annual goals, that we want to be at a percentage to say, you know what, though? We're going to change our policy because this is how we give direction is through policy. We're saying thirty, really, we mean twenty, but I don't really mean twenty. I really mean twenty-five. So I mean twenty-five. Um, it sounds like there's some people that do, and there are some people that prefer twenty. So we just got to figure out which it is, and there's a couple of different ways to do that. Either we can send it to the finance committee who, with people that care more about it, we can decide for ourselves now and give direction, or we can continue to try to persuade each other. Okay. Hearing that no one wants to try to persuade anyone else right now. We're, we're about even on this. Uh, does anyone feel real strongly that it shouldn't be twenty-five where it currently is? Or feel real strongly? Uh, let's just start with that. Does anyone feel strongly that it should stay at the current twenty-five?
I do.
I do.
I do as well.
Oh, wait, twenty-five?
Yeah.
No, I wanted a twenty. Sorry. I do not. Twenty-five.
Okay, so twenty-five, 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 and anyone else? No? Okay, so then there's four that would like to go to twenty, so we'll go to twenty. Okey-dokey. Any other policy questions? Okay. You're so welcome.
All right.
One, one meeting in December.
Item eight point three is the property tax relief grant presentation. Tonight, Christie is going to provide the board with a presentation regarding the property tax relief grant. This is an item that we have discussed in the past. After the presentation, Christie will answer any questions that the board may have.
Yes. Okay, so a little background. Um, as you know, evidence-based funding includes a provision for school districts with high tax rates relative to their peers across the, uh, state to lower property tax burden on their taxpayers by, um, abating taxes with a state grant that would replace a portion of that, those abated taxes. So this year, the, uh, state budget has allocated fifty-three point sixty-five million for this purpose. Um, our district, there is a new formula, uh, this year. So our district has moved up in the rankings to a hundred and eighty-seventh, uh, up from last year's two hundred and sixty-seventh ranking. Um, if we were awarded a grant, we would have to abate taxes for two years. That's a new provision in the state law. So the maximum amount that we could, uh, possibly, uh, provide in tax relief to our taxpayers this year is thirteen point four seven million dollars. Um, and the flip side, the maximum amount that we would receive in, uh, a state grant is twelve point three nine million dollars. And you could ask for up to that thirteen point four, and we could receive up to that. So if we were, if the state were able to get to number a hundred and eighty-seventh, they may be able to only give us four million dollars, and then our abatement would be proration to that, or prorated to that amount.
So we would get less money, but we would save property taxes.
You would save, we would get less money and our taxpayers would save.
More than we lost.
More than we lost, yes.
Can I ask a clarifying question before we move on? So you stated that we're ranked a hundred and eighty-seventh. The state has fifty-three point six million to disperse until they run out.
And they will run out in districts one through thirty-seven? Is that, was that a question?
This is an opportunity we have that we have no real expectation, we'll say, or chance of receiving the grant, but it's worth noting that this is the second year that we've been offered this opportunity, and if we want to take the opportunities for property tax relief.
Correct.
We should consider applying for this, even though we won't, and even if we did, by miracle, get this, we wouldn't have to accept less money. This just gives us the option to do so should something happen ever that knocked out a hundred in some districts first.
First, right. And I was looking at my notes from the last year, and, um, last year, the state was actually encouraging districts to apply for it to show that there is a need. So they were encouraging all districts, even if they did not have a great chance of being awarded a grant, you know, to make a statement.
I have a quick question. It may be a really stupid question, but I'm going to ask anyway. I consistently hear that we have, in, in the county anyway, the highest taxes in the state. How is it that we're ranked a hundred and eighty-seventh if we have the highest taxes?
So this is based on our tax rate. So our tax rate relative to other unit districts is a hundred and eighty-seven. Or, uh, not only to unit districts, but to just, you know, there's a.
And, and aren't there multipliers to districts that heavily favor single, single school districts over community districts?
Um, I didn't really go into the formula as much as I did last time, but I, for instance, the number one district has a twelve point one one tax rate because they live in a very, remember, your tax rate, if the higher, the higher your EAV, the lower your tax rate. So this tax, this district happens to be a very poor community, so they have a very high.
Compounded by the fact that a lot of the schools higher on the list than us have lower tax rates but higher multipliers, which I do remember quite clearly from last year, indicated that they were schools that were single school districts or high school only level or elementary only level, which heavily favors counties other than ours that are operating far more efficiently. So that, that hasn't changed from what I'm seeing in your presentation.
No, no.
Thank you.
Okay. Um, so considerations, again, the, the new this year is, uh, the requirement to abate taxes for two years, although we would only get the grant for one year from the state. However, any funds that we receive from the state in calendar year twenty is that abatement. That, the next year, the following year, that becomes part of our hold harmless EBF, uh, evidence-based funding. So we're, we are recouping it still from the state, but not through the property tax relief grant. If we were to receive the full amount of the grant and abate the full amount, the revenue we would lose is approximately two point one five million, and that would spread over fiscal years twenty to fiscal year twenty, twenty, twenty-two. Um, if the March of twenty twenty, operating referendum is successful and the district is awarded a grant, we could, property owners could see a reduction or would see a reduction in their twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one tax bills despite a referendum rate increase. Um, but as we stated, if the event, in the event we were awarded the grant and the loss is too impactful for the district, uh, we could just make the decision not to file the abatement documents with the counties. So this is what, how it would play out for an average homeowner. Levy year nineteen, projected tax rate, we don't have that final number yet, but that's what we're projecting, is about four point seven seven nine oh. The projected le, um, tax rate after the abatement would be four point one four oh nine. So on a home, whoops, I'm sorry. What did I do? So on a home of, uh, um, fair market value of two hundred thousand dollars, divide that by three because, uh, EAV is one-third of market value. That comes to about sixty-six thousand dollars. You take off the homeowner's exemption, and you will end up at, da-da-da. There we go. Thank you. Um, your current bill without the abatement would be about twenty-nine hundred dollars. That's the district portion only. After the abatement would be twenty-five hundred dollars, so that's a savings of three hundred and eighty-seven dollars. And then I've worked that out for, uh, various, uh, home prices, home values.
So Christie, you've already done all this work, and the odds of us getting this at all are pretty miniscule.
Miniscule.
And if we did get it, we could turn it down?
We could turn it down. So, and there's the beauty, this year, the timeline actually works for us. If you remember last year when we applied, our, the referendum date was April second, and we had to determine this by March thirtieth. And this, uh, year, the referendum date is March seventeenth. So we, we would know already if the referendum failed or passed, the outcome of the referendum, and if we got the, uh, grant. But yes, you're correct. We are a hundred and eighty-seven, so.
Yeah, and here's the thing for me, is that the state is asking you to go through this process to show them that there's a need. Whereas instead of doing a long application and everything, is there any chance, Dr. Sparland, that you can just send them a note that says, guess what, there's a need? Because I find this unacceptable. I, I feel like at the state level, there's things that they do that are pretend help. And this is pretend help. This is not really a relief or a promise that can be fulfilled. If it had any, you know, merit, then we could sit here and talk about it and say, yeah, let's go for it. And I think we usually do, but this is the kind of thing that I find unacceptable. They just need a note that says, guess what? If you want to put up some serious money that will actually do something for our district, then we'll fill out an application. But that's a lot of work for Christie. She's already put all this work into this presentation. That's enough. As far as I'm concerned, I will say no to doing this.
How involved is the application process?
I was just going to say it's, it's, it's very, it's very simple.
I, Tony, I, I, yeah.
And I appreciate that, Tony, I do. Uh, but it is simply just filling out, uh, the amounts on, and this year, it's an online application, and that's why this year we need a board vote. Last year, you just took a straw poll and we moved forward with it. And, and even at that time, it was just a board signature.
Yeah, I know, but I find it unacceptable that even, even, even a small amount of time that should be spent on something that's not a, you know, it's not true help. It's pretending to help schools.
Yes.
I would just like to add a small thanks for your presentation and providing some realistic, um, numbers based on home values throughout the community, whereas we'd always see something based on a two hundred thousand dollar home. So I like the range that you're providing when you do these presentations, so thank you for adding those.
Thank you.
I'm just going to add in, kind of to piggyback off what Tony is saying, I, I find it a, a a bit offensive that what is being presented to school districts like ours that gets about two-thirds of what we ought to get in funding, that not only do we have an expectation that we will fill out this form and make a decision on this because we need to show a need when, I mean, you just have to look at the funding numbers to see there's clearly a need. And a county like ours that is one of the highest taxes, not rates, but taxes, um, falls a hundred and eighty-seventh. And I'm not sure where our ranking was in terms of lowest percentage funded. I don't know that it's that high. So my concern is so great with this for a variety of reasons. Most of all, offering schools that are not fully funded less dollars, saying if you take less money, which you already don't have enough of, you can give property tax relief of this much, that's an impossible choice. It's absolutely impossible, and it's not fair to homeowners in our area that are taxed so highly that we say, we'll give you this, but only if you give us back some of this. We don't have enough money as it is. Um, so, and I know that that's nothing to do with you. This is more just a statement for the, the, the room. Um, but it's really not true relief. So I think that that's really not very helpful. That being said, I mean, I do want them to know, and if they're saying this is the only way, they'll listen. It feels like you might want to consider it just because at least we've tried everything, so.
I'm sorry, I missed, but, uh, something happened over here, so, what did you say?
I don't like it, but I, I think, and, and we probably ought to, in my opinion, just do that because i- if this is what they're saying we need to do to show that we need this, then we need to do what we need to do to show it. Do I think that that's ridiculous? Absolutely.
Okay, yeah.
Um, but if that's what they're saying, the point of this is, we do need to show them that.
Is there a little checkbox on the application that we're filing under protest?
We could add one, maybe.
If there's a comments section, I could.
Yeah, maybe, maybe Dr. Sparland add that little note that Tony was mentioning. Because we're voting on this tonight, right? And the length of time they give us to talk about this and vote is just really not cool either.
Right.
So it didn't even, the applications weren't even released, and the information wasn't even released till mid-November. So that's why, uh, it has to be a, an action, or an information in action.
Thank you.
Thank you. If anyone else wants to weigh in, we can move to action item nine point one. I have a motion for bills for payment.
I make a motion to authorize the payment of bills in the amount of three million eight hundred and eighty-one thousand two hundred and thirty-five dollars and seventy-seven cents as presented.
Second.
Mrs. Swanson?
Aye.
Mrs. Doyle?
Aye.
Ms. Morgan?
Aye.
Mrs. Croner?
Aye.
Mr. Baumann?
Aye.
Mrs. Moyer?
Aye.
Mr. Lightfoot?
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero. Item nine point two, approval of the school calendar. Are there any questions?
Just, I want to say, we believe in the committee and thank you, and sorry for all the past comments.
I think there will be many happy parents cheering around the town tonight that they get to see the calendar officially.
Um, I think the only thing I'd add is that although we're never going to make everybody happy ever, no calendar ever will because it's tens of thousands of people trying to do the same thing and schedule their vacation at a completely different time than every other twenty thousand thing. I, I really do appreciate the committee being, um, so enthusiastic about going back and trying again for us, for, for our community and for our parents, and it is much appreciated.
With that said, I make a motion to approve the twenty, twenty twenty-one school calendar as presented.
Second.
Ms. Morgan?
Aye.
Mr. Lightfoot?
Aye.
Mrs. Doyle?
Aye.
Mrs. Swanson?
Aye.
Mr. Baumann?
Aye.
Mrs. Moyer?
Aye.
Mrs. Croner?
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero, item nine point three, board policies.
I make a motion to approve board policies, section five, general personnel, five colon one eight zero, five colon three three zero, section six, instructions, six colon four zero, six colon three four zero, and section seven, students. And section seven, students, seven colon one zero zero.
Second. Mrs. Doyle?
Aye.
Ms. Morgan?
Aye.
Mr. Lightfoot?
Aye.
Mrs. Moyer?
Aye.
Mrs. Croner?
Aye.
Mrs. Swanson?
Aye.
Mr. Baumann?
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero, item nine point four, extension of the real estate broker contract.
I make a motion to approve an extension of the existing listing agreement with Les Robinson of Baird and Warner Naperville, Illinois to April twenty-seventh of twenty twenty.
Second. Mrs. Swanson?
Aye.
Ms. Morgan?
Aye.
Mrs. Doyle?
Aye.
Mrs. Croner?
Aye.
Mr. Baumann?
Aye.
Mrs. Moyer?
Aye.
Mr. Lightfoot?
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero, item nine point five, approval of the property tax relief grant application.
I make a motion to approve the property tax relief grant application.
Second. Ms. Morgan?
No.
Mr. Lightfoot?
No.
Mrs. Doyle?
Aye.
Mrs. Swanson?
Aye.
Mr. Baumann?
Aye.
Mrs. Moyer?
Aye.
Mrs. Croner?
Aye.
Motion passes five two. Item nine point six, discussion and approval of rollback options with a successful referendum. Sir, the, the, Dr. Sparland, perhaps you could.
Yep, Christie, you want to go ahead and start there?
So on the uh, screen are some of the rollback, rollback, rollback those prices, rollback options uh, that the board has uh, brought to us to can, to research and to present. Um, on the top, we start with revenue options. And the, this would be if the referendum were to pass, uh, if we had a successful referendum in March. So this first one is for a twenty-dollar flat fee for all clubs and activities. The current activity fee is thirty-five dollars for K-eight, sixty-five dollars for nine twelve, with club fees being at twenty-five dollars. So that would be a reduction in revenue by a hundred thousand dollars. Next, we have a re- reduction in high school sports fees. There are two options listed up there. One is a tiered option, uh, starting with two hundred dollars. Next sport would be a hundred and fifty, with the third sport being a hundred. Or another option is to have each sport at a hundred and fifty dollars. The tiered option would be a reduction in um, fees collected by about just under a hundred and eighty thousand and the one hundred and fifty dollars per sport would be right around two hundred and forty-one thousand. To reduce driver's education fees from four hundred dollars to three hundred dollars would be a reduction in revenue or co- fees collected by about uh, twenty-nine thousand six hundred. And then finally, uh, registration fees, uh, to reduce those. And I listed all the tiers. So high school would drop forty-five dollars to a hundred and fifty from where it currently is. Junior high would reduce by twenty-five dollars to a hundred and forty. Elementary, uh, that would be K-five, from one twenty to one hundred. Full day kindergarten is currently at five hundred and fifty dollars. This would reduce it to three hundred dollars. And the half-day kindergarten for the um, small portion that we have, sixty dollars to fifty dollars. So to total all those, and in this total, I did use the tiered sports option. I mean, we can swap that out if you'd like, uh, but all those together would reduce revenue by uh, about nine hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars. Any questions about the revenue portion?
I'm not sure if necessarily a question, but more of a comment because I know we had received some public comment about driver's education and how it's, they get so much less doing it in school as opposed to out of school. So my child, I have kids that have done it outside of school. So I just did a little looking and the least expensive option for a local driver's ed school is four hundred and ninety-nine dollars. And that is thirty hours of classroom instruction plus six hours behind the wheel and six hours of observation. So what that means is they're driving for two hours, but they're with another student. So it's not one-on-one instruction. And according to what's on our website, the in-school driver's ed is four hundred dollars and they get thirty hours of class time and six hours behind the wheel. So it's very comparable as far as what they're getting and plus they are doing it during the school day, which let me tell you, having to fit it in outside of your school schedule, not easy. It would be much more convenient if my kid could just do it while they're in school. So it's about a hundred dollars more plus the fitting it into the schedule. And if you miss a day, you have to make up a day and.
Thank you for doing that. Um, yeah, research.
And it goes up from there. If you want one-on-one, you have to pay six or seven hundred dollars.
So I, I have, has our driver's education enrollment dropped with the increase in fee?
Um, I don't have that answer, but I don't believe it has.
I was under the impression there's like a waiting list.
Yeah, there's quite a demand according to the driver's ed teachers.
And that we only charge for behind the wheel portion of driver's ed.
Wasn't it like twenty dollars or something? I don't know what you mean by we only charge for behind.
Oh, if the student only needs to retake like the classroom portion, for instance, there, there's no charge for the classroom portion.
Okay, so just so that we're aware of what we're gonna try to do with this, we're gonna go through, we've gone through the revenue. We're going to have Faith go through our expenses and then we're going to go each item to take a straw poll on them to see what we want to leave in, what we don't want to leave in. Just so you kind of have an idea of, of where things are gonna head with this.
Yeah, that was, thank you, Lori, that was gonna be my question.
Yeah, it sounds good. And what number are we looking for?
I, I'll make a, I want to make a general comment. So look, I, I understand why we're doing this. I, I have some, I have some problems with it in that it feels like carrot in the stick type situation and I, I, I didn't, I think, I don't think many of us liked what happened in Hinsdale when they said pass the referendum or we're canceling football. This is not the, that, but it's similar. And the thing that concerns me is the thing that I, I think I've said before, which is if the referendum passes and then our response to that is to immediately start spending more money, I understand some of these are reductions in fees and that impacts pocketbooks. It feels like we're trading dollars, right? So how do we balance that? Okay, we have additional revenue if the referendum passes without putting all that money immediately back into the budget and we're not in a better place than we were. That's my concern. So thank you for that because I was gonna say, you know, there's some things in here that, yes, I can go along with. There are other things that I, I just feel like I can't. So thank you for allowing us to kind of look at these line by line.
I, I want to say this, Lori, that the way that I look at this is that we're saying as a board, this is what we're willing to put back if the referendum passes or we're willing to entertain if the referendum is a possibility. If it's not a possibility, then people know clearly what the deal is before we get there. And then they know what the consequences would be, one way or the other. And I think it's always good to have this discussion because hopefully, we're gonna go in a more positive direction financially with or without the referendum as the years go by and we have to know which of these things really are impacting people. And we found out by increasing the sports fees that really the enrollment did not drop. So there are some times where people say, this is horrible, this shouldn't happen, and somehow it is, it is able to happen and it does not create the um, consequences that we thought it would. Now, some of these things, we don't know. We don't know what the consequences are of, of not having it, like class size, for example. So I think what we're just doing is setting a clear vision for everybody in the community. This is the way it's gonna be and this is how it's gonna be if we don't have any money.
So, so let's, I want to be clear again. So after we decide on each line item, once the board approves those items that are approved, if the referendum passes, this automatically goes into effect or we're gonna have another discussion?
Well, we have to have another discussion. We haven't, I mean, we haven't even settled all the contracts yet.
On which contracts?
Like even, like teacher contracts haven't even been settled yet. Isn't that gonna affect the budget? Just as much as some of these rollbacks?
It will, but we can't discuss that part.
I know. I'm just saying, to me, it seems kind of like I'm, like I'm gonna spend an hour talking about each one of these line items, when at the end of the day, that may, may or may not have to change again.
So I think the, the concept here, and this goes back a couple of years still, was that at the, at the beginning of our process of budget reductions, which has gone on, I think we're in our fifth year, we'd gone around as a board and those people that were on the board at that time had gone around to home and schools and said, listen, we don't want to, we don't want to ask for a referendum. We want to, we want to find some way to do this that isn't gonna affect our property taxes because our taxes are high. Is there a way to do this that, you know, i- is this something that we would rather see in a per-use? Or is this something we would rather see shared throughout the community? And at that time, the board had decided that, that fees were the way to go. So we had inflated them. Um, they needed to be fixed anyway. Let's just be clear. The fees were, had not been adjusted for a very long time prior to that. So they did need an adjustment, which is why I don't think many of these things are looking at anything in terms of fees, going back to pre-budget reduction levels. However, with, with the thought being that we would either offer a increase in fee or a referendum, it is, seems like it follows that same path. That if we were going to go for a referendum instead, that we wouldn't be asking community members to pay quite as high of fees and a referendum together. So that's the concept behind it. Um, as to each specific item, I mean, it's just gonna depend what, what we decide to do. Um, I don't know that we necessarily need a ton of time on each of these. We've looked at these before. And I know we've all had an opportunity to explore these a little bit. So it'll go as fast or slow as we want it to.
It'll go faster for me if I know what our number is. So Christie, what's the amount the referendum could realistically be expected to result?
About five point seven million.
So if it's five point seven million, okay.
I would like to say, I don't think we need this number to necessarily match that because we also.
We're not looking to have it match that.
Yeah, we just had a lengthy discussion earlier about what we want our fund balance to be and how we are not even close to the lowest of that desired amount.
Right, so that could be part of it.
So during the last year's discussion on this same topic with the referendum on the agenda, or on the ballot, I mean, um, we had on the agenda the same type of decision that we chose to make so that people had the information that they felt they needed um, to know this. During that time, we had asked the finance committee for a recommended dollar amount and I believe it was one million that, that the committee was comfortable with last year. I don't believe the expected.
Are you talking about for the rollbacks?
Yes, last year's. Was that about, correct, one point one-ish?
Number we landed on, yes.
Okay, so on this, if we were to look at that as a jumping off point, that would be for us to decide what that number we felt comfortable with is. As a guideline, one point one million was something that was looked at last year. But, you know, that may have changed from last year to this year. Um, but it gives you an idea of where you might want to be yourself for what you would want to look at. Okay, so if there's no further thoughts at this point, let's just have Faith go through the expenses and then we'll just take a look at what we're, where we're at.
All right, uh, following along up there, uh, the, to reinstate junior high athletics would be three hundred and forty thousand dollars. The next item is advanced placement testing expenses. Uh, prior to uh, the cuts in the past, we paid for that and now that is at the expense of students and their parents for two hundred and thirty thousand dollars. To resume summer school transportation is thirty-eight thousand. Then there are different options here for reducing the class size guidelines. To move kindergarten, second grade from twenty-eight back to twenty-five would be approximately three hundred and ninety thousand dollars. Do want to remind uh, the board and the audience that is here, is that could fluctuate from year to year as enrollment goes up and down. So that's not a hard, fast uh, number of what that would be. Uh, and then third through fifth grade to go from thirty to twenty-six would be four hundred and twenty-two thousand five hundred dollars. Uh, and then you see the other option that is there if you only went to uh, twenty-eight, what the savings would be. At junior high going from thirty-two to thirty is two twenty-seven five. Uh, and then the estimated cost to reinstate the third grade gifted model would be four twenty-two five. But I did want to add that in talking with some uh, parents and staff members of the, of gifted students, I'd want us to put together a task force and to kind of relook at that to see if that is truly um, the model that we would want to pursue.
So you're saying that you wouldn't necessarily ask for a reinstatement of the third grade gifted model? So this might not be something that is an expense that you would want to necessarily incur since you might be looking to do a different way of delivering gifted ed in a, for different purposes?
Correct.
That's, that's interesting and that's interesting and I hear that. My concern is that, um, I mean, this has been one of, this has been w- w- one of the bigger areas of concern and, and I think loss of services. Um, I, um, and I'm not ranking them over, you know, what we've, you know, what we've done over the last couple of years, but this one was a significant change. And so I certainly would think um, that what we would be looking at might be a model shift or a implementation shift, but would be you know, would be an increase and s- um, would be to bring back services to bring back services to some of our students, would you, uh, without having a task force yet? What, what, what do you think about that? I, I just worry that not allocating, potentially not allocating a um, additional dollars if, um, to this right now, that we may never do it because there's never gonna be ton, you know, or, yeah. So that's, so that's my, I think, thought and question to you, that if we're going to shift to get better, that's fine and great. But then, but I want to know that how can we, we're not, how can we do that with the funds we have currently allocated and add additional money?
That's really difficult to answer without having the task force and, and to go through that. It would still be to serve our, uh, our truly gifted students. Um, I'm not sure that we would need that full amount of money to do that, but I need, I would need to hear and have a task force and to, to create a totally different program without a whole lot more stakeholder input. I wouldn't feel comfortable doing that. I'm just not sure that we would need that same amount um, to be able to enhance and continue the services of our elementary gifted students.
Have you had an opportunity or are we talking about a significant, there, what was there, an audit or a review and a plan a number of years ago? That was intended for the, our gifted program and I, I think what I've heard and I could be mistaken is that some of that um, happened and then some of that, that plan and a rollout of us from the new plan, some of that happened and some of that did not happen. Um, and.
I think you're referring to the work of Laura Callahan. I think it's her name that came in and, and worked with a group of people. I have read some of that and some of that was put into action, some of it is not. And then we've also changed how we're delivering some of the services to students that aren't in the gifted program that have an impact of what that would look like from that timeframe.
I, I would like to, if, if it's, we're going to vote on things, I would like to at least have um, restructuring, um, doing, so I, I would like to see that, that gifted piece on here in some fashion so that we know that there are funds, dollars allotted based on the referendum for you to move forward with an enhanced gifted education model. Rather, I don't want, I don't want to move forward saying, well, we don't know what it's gonna be, we're not gonna do anything because, again, two years down the road, you're gonna see something, well, we'd love to do it, but you know what? you're gonna see something, well, we'd love to do it, but you know what, we just, we can't, we can't, we can't give you three hundred thousand dollars right now.
I, I personally would be more comfortable with restructure and have some allocated funds and saying we are reinstating the exact-
Okay, yes.
Can I just, this is maybe not a question for this discussion, but I, just some clarification, that the current model that we have is not actually gifted program, it's an accelerated program, correct?
We're identifying a lot higher percentage than what a truly gifted percentage would be.
And what they're doing is they're just accelerating a grade. They're not-
For third grade, that's true.
For every grade, that's true.
It, it's a little bit-
Junior high, that's true?
For math versus language arts. In math, it is accelerating and going through the, the next grade level. At some of the levels in elementary, the language arts is more enhancing in, you're providing reading material at that child's reading level and, um, not to take away the luster of the reading, the literacy framework that's being put together, but that, that piece of meeting a child at their reading level would be happening in a lot of our classrooms too. But it's not an acceleration through, but language arts standards aren't really written that you must conquer fourth grade vocabulary before you can get to a fifth grade text. It's much more of a enhancement and working on writing and reading skills in general, where math is more sequential.
So then it's just at the junior high level that the language arts is accelerated? Cause they skip a grade, basically?
Correct, and even then, it's the next grade level's curriculum, but it isn't sequential like a math curriculum would be.
So we would wanna first, you would feel more comfortable adjusting the wording from reinstating the third grade gifted model to being, uh, restructure gifted education with dollar allocation?
Mm-huh. Christie, can I ask what the AP testing expense, how that got calculated?
Um, I looked at past years, what we spent.
And what we spent for whom?
Um, I just went back to fiscal year seventeen, I believe, and sixteen.
The last year we were paying for AP tests, that's what the dollar amount would have been at the district-
This is us going back to paying for everybody?
Well, so, great point. So when this first came up and this actually started with the finance committee years ago, the, and, forgive me if I'm rehashing some of this, but the reason, the reason the board decided to do it at the time was, we were, I went to, and I think others did, we talked to some teachers in the buildings, and one of the things we were hearing in feedback is that the, the AP teachers were frustrated that more kids weren't taking the test. They were putting in the hours in the classroom, studying, taking the tests in the classroom, but they weren't sitting for the AP test to have the opportunity to possibly
Right.
qualify for college credit or getting out of, of a school in college or whatever. And so, um, the, the board at that time felt that that was a worthwhile investment. To say, hey, it's not just about, we, we would love to encourage kids to take AP, it's about you sitting for that test. And, you know, seeing where you, where you net out. Um, the problem occurred, and, uh, there's no one in this room that was part of it, so I'm not pointing any fingers. The problem occurred is that the board said, we're gonna pay for your AP testing, and what administration did was, well, okay, anybody that wants to take the test can. We were paying for kids to take the test that weren't even enrolled in the AP class.
And some of the kids weren't taking it seriously because it wasn't their money on the line, and they were going in and taking the test and failing and then saying, I'll take it again.
I can't control for that. The point I wanted to make is-
That's what I've heard.
I, I think the real number could be lower than two hundred thousand dollars if we had some proper, uh, parameters around it to say, the student must be currently enrolled in the class to be able to sit for the test.
I, I would also like to add that I distinctly remember sitting in, in the audience and having a high school AP teacher sit at this desk and say, please take this away. Because they had students who were, it was being paid for, they were being required to go and take the test and she's, they were just sitting there and not even doing it, cause they didn't wanna be there. And what I have been told by AP teacher is they're, well, they're identifying earlier in the year, college board is requiring you to register much earlier now, like significantly earlier before even half a semester was completed.
You have to register by November first, cause I just did it.
Yes, so do I. Um, and that if, you know, they are supposed to be able to help identify students who they would recommend them taking it or not, like if you're struggling to pass the class, then it doesn't make sense for you to go and-
So the question for Dr. Sparlin and for, um, uh, Dr. Delquist or Mrs. Delquist? Faith Delquist? Um, is, do, do we need at any or in any way, shape or form to consider this, or are, do we have enough kids paying that it doesn't look like it's the situation with the board from before where some kids are not sitting for the test? Or are we getting a healthy percentage of the kids who are taking the AP classes to sit for the test? What's going on?
Can we see some numbers on how many students have signed up? Are we able to see that? I know two.
The other thing I wonder about that particular thing is that the, the goal was pretty darn good. Kids that weren't feeling like they had the money or the, um, they, they just were nervous about it, taking it for whatever reason, um, were able to get those tests taken care of. So would there be a way to allow for that where we could reduce that amount by saying that there would be a certain number of, um, fee waivers or, or something, or something to that effect, um, that-
Saying like if they qualify, qualify for free or reduced, that we would pay?
Right.
Like a scholar?
As long as there were the requirements for attending the class and a minimum grade.
Maybe receive teacher recommendation for registering?
Or whatever you guys come up with, cause I don't know. But the concept being that we would be able to allow for the students that were genuinely interested in taking it, but just really didn't have the ability to, to still be able to take those tests, um, but not incur a lot of the troubles that have kinda come along with it.
Is it common practice for districts to pay for AP testing expenses? Um, I, I, I'm just curious, i- is that a common practice?
No.
Yeah, I, um, okay, yeah, I mean, I think we're asking for a lot of more information tonight related to this, which is, I think, interesting and helpful information, um, to I guess have. I, uh, this is not, would not be something that would be on the top of my list, but that's, and that's-
And I think it's just based on the information, right? Like based on the information. If there's tons of kids out there with a need, then we need to know that. If there's barely anybody with a need, we could take care of it with a, a small adjustment without even doing a line item, you know? It just depends on how many kids have this need, I think.
What is, what is the student base, how are they similar or different? Those that are taking it and that were, we would be paying for the AP exam versus tho- the, those that are enrolled in dual credit courses at the high schools now that are getting college credit?
There'd be a much higher number for those that are sitting for the AP tests?
More testing for AP classes than are enrolled in dual credit courses.
Cause there are more AP course offerings and there are dual credit course offerings.
If there were equal numbers of classes, dual credit and AP, do you think the numbers that Mr. Baumann was alluding to would be more even? Or do you think there's always gonna be a preference towards the AP?
It kind of just depends on the college that the student would be going to. I think dual credit is kind of a, a foregone conclusion and you don't have to necessarily sit for a test. So, all things equal, go to that, but it's much harder for, uh, high schools to offer the dual credit because of all of the different certifications and things that you would need.
Maybe the,
But I, we had this argument way back in the day, right? So a dual credit kid is a different kind of kid than an AP kid? And we fight this battle all the time. An AP kid is like your top twenty percent, right? A dual credit kid is a kid who thinks someday I wanna go to a Banzai, I wanna try college. I'm gonna try this course, if I get a C or better, it's taught by a college teacher. Cause we have them at West High all the time. I put kids in those classes all the time. And they're successful and they learn how to do college and they learn, I mean, obviously it's different than college, cause you, you still have to be in school, right? But they take the same tests as the, as the college does because our Wabanzi teacher teaches it at West Aurora. So, but it's a different kid and sometimes the AP kids just wanna take dual credit.
I, I-
It's a, it's a, it goes on your transcript. It's a class, it's a college level class, it starts your college transcript. The difference is, it's a, it's, you know, there's the AP level and then there's, you gotta take the test at the end or you take the tests all the way through like you would a regular college class. I guess I'm just interested in this because this is the first time, it, uh, and this is fine, but it's the first time that I'm seeing this on the list after, you know, a discussion for over probably a year. And so, and so I'm just, so to, just in my, in my mind, as we're looking at this stuff, um, this, uh, this expense in my mind sort of seems like a, a, a luxury expense. And so when, so I, I'm wondering, um, how much time are we gonna spend talking about this if, um, cause I would love to do it for everybody if we had the money, sure, or you know, with parameters, cause clearly that's not always the answer. But, um, but yeah, how much time are we gonna spend on that?
And that's, we have a ten minute limit?
Are we there?
So, what we're gonna spend on it is the same amount we would spend on any item that there's been expressed interest in, which is I think what the goal is. Um, so what I think I'm hearing about this particular line item is that the concept is something that we would like some more information about, but perhaps just like the gifted ed, it's not in the same iteration as it had been in the past, so it might not be quite what we're looking for, um, to be able to just say, we're gonna put this dollar amount toward it.
Implement it more effectively, responsibly, um, what's the word? Like I said, you mean-
And address it in the budget, rather than in a rollback.
I just did a few calculations if this will help the discussion at all. If we were to bring it back and I just looked at, if every student that is on frame reduced lunch decided to take an AP, um, test and we covered just those expenses, we would need forty-five thousand dollars. I don't think every single student, but there might be some students that took two or three or, you know, those pieces. So if we just allocated an amount and said for those students that qualify for free and reduced, uh, or reduced lunch and they would have to be enrolled in a course. And we said that was, that kind of gets to the intent that I heard people were talking about. I'm not even advocating that that would be an added expense, but maybe that's a more-
So perhaps we can look into that a little bit, um, further another time. Uh, if the, unless we think that that's a reasonable number to go with for, for now. Thoughts? Anybody quickly? Yes, no, later, now?
I, I would want more specific, if that was gonna be an option, I would want to know how many of those students are enrolled and I think it should tie to teacher recommendations.
A future agenda to discuss the AP structure and dual credit structure. Um, okay then, so we're gonna look at this as each item, just a quick straw poll. Um, the only question left would be the third grade gifted model, we would, uh, there was a change to restructure it from being reinstating it to a restructuring of the gifted education model, um, at some different dollar amount. If we don't feel that that's a quantifiable dollar amount that we would need to allocate toward it, um, should that be something that we also save for a future discussion? Knowing that we would like to, but we need to have some kind of idea of what it would cost before we could necessarily make that decision.
What you just said. I think we-
I would li- I'd like, I'd like to see the funds, if we're doing this-
The full four twenty-two.
Allocate it to enhancing our gifted ed.
And I don't know if it would need to be the full four twenty-two, but I would need to have some kind of idea of what that goal would be because I do think that that is a very important program.
Heather?
I, I agree.
Would you have a doll- which one?
I, I, I would, I agree that I would like a placeholder in a dollar amount that said, and if you could do it the way you wanna do it for less, then let's do it that way. But I think that, like, with four hundred, yeah.
Place some funding aside for-
Mm-huh, a restructuring.
Allie? The gifted education restructuring, do you have a dollar amount? Would you like to wait till later and get a more thorough idea of what she's looking for? Wait till later? Brent?
I, I, I think we need more discussion around this.
Okay, Tony?
I already figured out my list and, uh-
Is that on it? And if so, at what dollar amount?
It's not on there because of the other things that I want on there.
Okay, so we're looking then, I guess we're starting at the bottom up, but we will go back to the top and then back down. Um, but for the gifted ed, when we come to that, what we'll be looking for is to remove that item from this list only, not because we don't want to look at the gifted education and putting funding into it, but because we do wanna know what it is would be in the best interest of this program going forward so that we could more carefully allow for the funding for that in the way that was needed.
So by taking it off the list though, you are removing, you, you'd be removing the concept of improving gifted education based on a passing referendum?
I don't think that's what you're saying.
I, I don't, I don't think that-
She's saying we're gonna put an asterisk by that one.
We're putting in it, yes, as a, we gotta think about this and we can come back to it later. Um, but it, it's not, at this point, it's not the dollar amount that's the issue. I don't think so much as the concept of the restructure and honestly, should this be something that should already be in our budget anyway? Um, and so wouldn't necessarily be a rollback. And maybe that's just semantics, but it-
Well, it is. I mean, a lot of these things should have been in our budget anyway, but cut them out because we've had to, so.
So I think that there's a clear intention across the board to, to add some funding to gifted education.
It's the issue that, what I'm hearing from Faith, that the, we wouldn't put it back exactly how it was.
Right, and this might say that, but it's not true.
We would put something back and we want to be clear,
Yes.
we support a gifted model, but it's not gonna be exactly what we had.
Yes, and then somehow assign a dollar amount to that. So we could leave it without a dollar amount and say that we would be able to put additional funding toward an enhanced gifted education model and not assign a set dollar because we don't know what it would cost.
Maybe just say to not exceed-
To not-
Or you could put a range in, even if you don't like ranges.
I'm not a fan of ranges.
I'd like to see us doing that, do that. I think it's a more clear, it's a clear picture for our community. It's a, keeps us and holds us accountable and, um, I would like to be able to-
So why don't we think on that while we get to our little totals, um, and start at the top? Just at the interest of it being nine twenty-one and Toni's left the room, so she will be back.
She said she knew what she wanted. Did she write it down?
Did she write it down? I don't know if that's legal, um.
This is, this is tricky though, cause, okay, so for voting line by, here's the thing. I have a, I have a dollar amount in my mind, right, in my items and everything. And that, and a dollar amount that I feel comfortable with, but if certain things on my list, all of these are good things, right? So if some of my things that are on my list don't make it, I could change it and, but I wouldn't know that if I'm voting, you know what I mean, like-
Well, that falls into just the, the general theory that we've run into every single year that we've ever had to do a line item budget reduction or rollback, which is that, yeah, that's right. Uh, but there's, there's not really a better way to do it that actually, um, gets to each item passing and th- th- there's been a lot of time spent on that too, and this has shown to be pretty much the most effective way for this particular group to operate.
So but this, what we're gonna be straw poll voting on tonight is not gonna be a final thing, obviously, because we've already given
It is.
indications that we want more information for some of these.
No, the items we vote on tonight will be final items. These are final votes. That's why I'm saying if there's some things that we want to hold off on deciding, we need to hold off on that. Um, because this is a, this is what we are saying to the community that they can expect. And, and I get it.
Process, but I'm not gonna, but I, you know, if my vote is, is not gonna, if I, if, if like reducing high school registration fees was not something originally on my list and, but then- but then I have room on my list, I'm not gonna punish, you know, the high school students by wanting, you know, and I, I wanna go back and.
So I see what you're saying. So you wanna, you want a second chance or a tiered voting system is what I sometimes hear people talk about. Ranked to voting.
Then we're kinda playing some games though, so maybe.
Right. That's what, that's what I'm saying. We could, we could do this for a long time, but what we can do is if something does not go through at the end of the list, the items that do not go through, we can go back one more time and say, does this change?
Thank you.
To make you want to do this now.
And that's enough to accommodate for what you were talking about, Heather.
And enough for Toni to, to get in the room.
So this list here is.
Oh, is that where you're? I'm ready.
List here is just showing the public, these are the things that we as a board have identified as, all of these things we think are important.
Of course. Uh, well, and there are more things than just the items on this list that are important that we have had to cut. Um, the, that's not what this is about at all. This is about what we know we would be able to forego should a referendum be successful. Okay. So let's start with item number one, the twenty dollar flat fee for all clubs and activities. Estimated to be a one hundred thousand dollar rollback in revenue. Uh, how, do we wanna just raise our hands?
Let's just raise our hands.
So straw poll, raise your hand if you would like to see a reduction in revenue for twenty dollar flat fee.
There you go.
What line are we on?
One.
At the top.
Twenty dollar flat fee for all clubs and activities. The current activity fee for K through eight is thirty-five, nine through twelve is sixty-five and current club fee K through twelve is twenty-five. This would put every single club and activity at each grade level to a twenty dollar fat, flat fee. And it would be a hundred, estimated to be one hundred thousand dollars in revenue reduction. If you're in favor, raise your hand. There is zero in favor of that flat fee. Reducing high school sports fees. We have two options. If you like the tiered option of two hundred for the first sport, one fifty for the second and one hundred for the third. Raise your hand. You will have a chance to vote for each if you are not successful at the tiered and we'll make sure that happens. If you want either one of them to happen and you don't care which, let's try this. If you want one of them to happen and you don't mind which, but you would like to reduce high school sports fees to one of these two amounts, let's raise our hands. We'll start with that. Nobody would like to reduce high school sports fees.
I would like to, but at the end of the day. As a, as a mom of, of sporty kids, I would love to reduce them, but at the end of the day, if the choice is between me paying for my kid to do sports or my money going to a whole community of kids, I'm gonna pay for my kid to do sports. I can pay, if I can't pay for my kid to do sports, then there's gotta be other avenues maybe, but where there's a will, there's a way.
Item three, reducing the driver's education fee from four hundred to three hundred. Anybody would like to see this happen? Okay. Zero to seven. It's no. Reduction of registration fees. Um, if you would like to see registration fees in general reduced. Well, I mean, if you, yeah, right.
Ruth and I are sitting there going, um, yeah.
But again.
Vote for the half day kindergarten fee from sixty to fifty.
That's a whole nother conversation. Versus full day, but.
It's nine o'clock. We're getting punchy.
Yeah. So, um, let's do the same way. If you want to see a reduction in registration fees as a topic, raise your hands.
As far as all of them, any of them?
Um, we can talk about that next, but if we want to see there be in general a reduction in res- registration fees at this point, this is the first thing to decide before we would take the time to go through each one.
I, I, well, I would only be in favor of one and that would be reducing the full day kindergarten registration fee.
Right, but five hundred and fifty dollars is still cheaper than daycare.
But let's not start a discussion unless most of us wanna have the discussion.
It, it's not daycare and we, we just, we had increased it as well. And I wasn't in favor of increasing it at, either at that point in time. I think that's, that's a undue burden to young families. I mean, kindergarten kids are generally families starting out, very young couples and I mean, coming, ah, that's a big burden.
I appreciate your guys' reasons, but the process is that we either entertain it or we don't. How many people wanna entertain registration fees is what Lori's asking.
Right. And I'm suppo, I'm giving the reasons.
And you would like to, and you would like to entertain registration fees. That's one. I also would like to talk about registration fees. Anyone else wanting to talk about registration fees? Okay. So that is two, five. Under expenses. Reinstating junior high athletics. We're raising our hands on that. That two, four, five, yes.
Yes.
Two, no. We were just doing the yeses.
I know, I am.
So we decided to withdraw from the AP testing at this point to discuss that another time. Resuming summer school transportation. That also is five, yes, two, no. All right. And then the next item will be reducing class size devisers. This one we're gonna take in two parts, or three parts, actually. One, the K through two, twenty-eight to twenty-five. I think we're at seven, zero on reducing the K through two class size from twenty-eight to twenty-five. Third through fifth grade, there are two separate options. Um, if you want to reduce the third through fifth grade from thirty to something. Uh, let's start with going to twenty-six, which is what the initial recommendation was. Raise your hand if you'd like to go with third through fifth grade class sized advisor being reduced to twenty-six. All right. That is one, two, three, four, five, six. So that will be reduction in third through fifth grade from thirty students down to twenty-six students in the class size. And that is six, zero. Or six, one, excuse me. So sorry. Uh, junior high, reducing the class sized advisor from thirty-two down to thirty. Please raise your hand if you'd like to do that. Also, six, one. And then the restructuring of the gifted education, uh, we're gonna put that as a re, we would like to see a commitment to additional funding for gifted education to be determined after you discuss what you want to do, but there will be a commitment to that program. Yeah.
How quick is that commitment?
Would you be able to get something like that enhanced for next school year?
For next school year?
When would we have an answer definitively so I could talk to the task, you know, cause I don't know, have to think through whether you start a task force now.
March eighteenth.
Yeah, I don't know if you could do that that quick.
Take a little bit more than six weeks to get that decided.
So.
In the interim then, what would be an alternative to that?
There's a clear indication from the majority of the board that we would like to see some commitment to uh, reestablishment and an enhancement of the gifted education programming. However, we don't, we don't know how to say that or how to allocate dollars to it at this moment.
Can I ask a clarifying question? We're like, some of us are like, yes, do this, there's money, here we go. And you're actually seeming to be kind of pushing back at that. So I understand you wanna task force and do, and do some things, but it's, I think one of the first times that I, I've been up here and as a, as a board or multiple board members saying here, up to four hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars, we wanna do something, but you're kinda like, no.
I'm just concerned about if it's reinstating the exact same model that we had. Right. So now I can go, I can come back and say, what are some of those ideas? I just, I think you'd want more people input than just mine.
We're, we're saying, I, at least what I'm, think most of us are vocalizing is that all we're trying to do is saying if, because these are all hypotheticals. If this referendum passes, one of our goals is to go back and re, and, and enhance what we are providing as gifted ed services. What that looks like, we understand it's questionable. It's not gonna be exactly what we, what we cut. Um, but it just feels like there's just a little pushback to it, that's all.
Not pushback, it's just to say, Faith, can you tell us the exact number of dollars that you're gonna need for a program that I haven't vested out with other people?
I think that's an, uh, that's.
Is hard.
That's an unfair.
Well, not that you're saying exactly, but just to, and, and I understand what we need to do, that you're wanting a number to attach to it.
I'd say that she wants to do it with a little more fidelity than what we're asking her to do right here on the spot.
Here's a question that I have. This right here is specifically just talking about at the third grade. We already have a gifted model in place for fourth grade and beyond. And you are wanting to restructure the entire thing. So is that correct? Or you were just thinking for the lower grades or?
It, it could be some enhancements at the different grade levels too, at the upper of elementary.
Okay.
So you, I could come back with a, here's what I could put together in two months. And then.
I'm just wondering if you're gonna create a task force.
Okay.
If, is that just gonna be for this third grade model or is that, that gonna kind of be the overall?
I, I think that we're getting enough questions on this when we did cover it the first time through, that I wanna make sure that we, I think that the only thing that's apparently clear is that we need a little bit more information and we don't have enough to make a decision either way on that right now. Um, so I'd like to request that we hold off on that one.
Can't we take a vote to, as a board, as a board, we are making a commitment to enhance our gifted education.
I believe that's where I started.
Well, and I think we should be able to say, I don't know, I, I feel like it doesn't up to, I don't understand why we can't say up to four hundred thousand dollars. And if Faith with her task force figures out that really we wanna do something a little bit different and it's gonna be two hundred thousand dollars, then that's great. But we're not gonna go beyond that four hundred thousand dollars, cause we, we, we can't. Um, so I, I still don't under, you know, I, I still.
I was waiting on a dollar amount. The four hundred thousand is the, the dollar amount that I'm hearing?
In, in, in my, in that, in my mind, you know, that is what the up to. So I'm just get.
So we're looking, what you're asking for is for us to vote, take a straw poll on a restructuring and enhancement of gifted education. Including additional allocated funds up to four hundred thousand dollars. Is that correct?
Yes. For just third grader for?
For the, for the, for the program that I missed. Through fifth grade program or the gifted education program throughout the district?
The elementary school program.
Faith, I, I just wanna see if I'm reading something else. So I, I understand how hard it is to come up with numbers and I just. The thing I'm, uh, the thing I'm thinking of is I don't think it's the end of the world if we say we back this, but we might not have it by next fall.
That's right.
It might be eighteen months.
Yeah.
Because we wanna do it right.
We wanna do it.
Yes.
Right?
Yes.
But, but to use your, to use your word, you know, the stick and the carrot, right? What are we as a board going to offer?
Parents of third grade students next year?
A referendum passes. And I don't think there's wrong to saying that some sort of gifted education enhancement target for, is not the answer. I don't think it has, we don't need to commit to.
Okay. So we're gonna vote on this one more time. This is gonna be the, the last one for the evening, I think, on this gifted model. It's the second or third time we've done this tonight. And everybody's got really good valid points. So that's fantastic. And I like seeing a balanced board where everyone's got a, a good reason for their good opinion. So let's try to make some sense of this for the rest of the world that's stayed this long. Thank you. Um, I'm going to call this a gifted elementary program restructure and enhancement with additional allocated funding. Done. Raise your hand if you would like to ask for that with a dollar amount TBD based on need.
I have eighty thousand dollars in my. That's all I have.
Somewhere between that. So we're looking at five, two to add that in.
Listen, I have my hand up for the junior high athletics.
Her hand was tired.
I'm having a bad day.
Okay. We'll call that six, one. Was that a hand up-ish? It was, it was your best. Okay. Ally had her hand up on that. All right. So if I'm looking at the dollars approximately plus gifted ed, whatever that ends up being, we're looking, I'm rough estimating around one point six.
Okay. So with the gifted as, with that number?
No, without, without the number.
Without the number? Take it out completely?
Because we have not determined a number, just that we would like to make sure that we allocate additional funding to an enhanced restructured gifted edu, elementary gifted education program.
Okay. So I have reinstate junior high athletics, resume summer school transportation. Uh, K through second, uh, class size guideline is twenty-five. Third through fifth guideline is twenty-six. Junior high is thirty, correct? Uh, that comes to one point four, one, eight, zero, zero, zero.
I got the same number.
We'll have a, we'll have a little card for you.
Um, okay. So that being done, that's on the expense side only. One more callback, as I had said, for the ones that did not pass, which was the revenue side items going back through. Would anyone like to change their vote on any revenue options? Hearing none, there will be no changes to the revenue options for rollback. The changes will be, as we've said on the expense side, reinstating junior high athletics, resuming summer school transportation, reducing class sized advisors K two from twenty-eight to five. Third, fifth through, from thirty to twenty-six, junior high from thirty-two to thirty. And a commitment to additional funding allocated for a restructure and enhancement of the elementary gifted education model. Dollar amount TBD. All right. Thank you very much. Is that what you need?
I just have a question. When you got your one point four eight million, did you use the four twenty-two?
No, that's, no, that's without the four twenty-two.
Yeah. And then there'll only be eighty-two thousand left for the gifted enhancement. If you stick with the one.
If she needs.
If you stick with the one point five million that Lori told us.
Listen, we can, we can take longer on this tonight?
I don't wanna take longer. I'm just saying.
We are going to go back to closed session. We obviously have a commitment here to enhancing and adjusting the gifted education model.
Did we, did we vote or, oh, okay. Was it? Oh, sorry.
Don't we have one more action item?
Anytime you guys are ready.
I make a motion to approve the personnel report as presented.
Second.
I'm very sad.
Can I just make one comment on the personnel report? Is, do we ever make comments about people who are deceased? Because we have one person now. I just think it's, it's very sad that we lost one of our custodians and that that's part of the personnel report. But anyway. Yeah. We can vote. Did you need a second? Lori?
Actually, do we need to take a vote on as presented? I was wondering. Okay. Item nine point six, we'll need a motion of discussion and approval of rollback options as discussed.
I make a motion to approve the rollback options.
With?
As discussed. That were listed. With a successful referendum.
Second.
You had all the words in there.
Mrs. Doyle?
Aye.
Mrs. Swanson? Mrs. Moyer?
Aye.
Mr. Lightfoot?
Aye.
Mr. Bauman?
Aye.
Mrs. Croner?
Aye.
Ms. Morgan?
Aye.
Motion passes seven, zero.
And now I make a motion to approve the personnel report as presented.
Second.
Mrs. Swanson?
Aye.
Mrs. Moyer?
Aye.
Mr. Bauman?
With, uh, just a word of special thanks for all the years of service that Mr. Wayne has provided to OHS. With, uh, just a word of special thanks for all the years of service that Mr. Wayne has provided to OHS, aye.
Mrs. Croner?
I second what Mr. Baumann said, aye.
Ms. Morgan?
Aye.
Mrs. Doyle?
Aye.
Mr. Lightfoot?
Aye.
Motion passes seven, zero, can I have a motion to adjourn? Oh, whoa, 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 you don't get off that easy.
My dream come true.
So sorry. Um, can I have a motion to return to closed session?
I make a motion to enter closed session under statutes five ILCS one twenty dash two C one. The appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance or dismissal of specific employees of the public body or legal counsel for the public body. Including hearing testimony on a complaint lodged against an employee of the public body or against legal counsel for the public body to determine its validity. And five ILCS one twenty dash two C two, collective negotiating matters between the public body and its employees. Or their representatives or deliberations concerning salary schedules for one or more classes of employees.
Second. Mrs. Doyle?
Aye.
Mrs. Swanson?
Aye.
Mrs. Moyer?
Aye.
Mr. Lightfoot? Mr. Baumann?
Aye.
Mrs. Croner?
Aye.
Ms. Morgan?
Aye.
Motion passed.